There are several changes to the agenda. And they were addition there, so we'll deal with those. The first one is Resolution 1617-6, establishing fees to be charged on land used applications. And we have that in front of us.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that be postponed until the next meeting so that Lisa and Randy can talk to Randy about that specifically?
Oh, okay.
I put that together and worked with Lisa, but Randy not had a chance to have any to say on it, and I think that should have been discussed now.
Okay, I was gonna worry about that, but that's fine. How about the new ordinance, number 735, the agenda?
That's later on in the agenda.
Please?
That's later on in the agenda.
Oh.
I just put it here because it's...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. There are no real announcements or introductions, so additions to the agenda, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person with a maximum of 15 minutes for all items. Speaking may not yield their time to review. Is there any additions to the agenda? Wayne?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank the city employees, the guys for cleaning up the streets after our big windstorm. Because there was a lot of debris and gutters and so forth. And another one, last area that was mentioned, I'm wondering, is the city water being tested for lead that was talked about last year? Like they said that sometime this year...
I think Alan has done that. Is that true, Alan?
Yes.
That's a yearly test, it's not every year?
Lead and copper isn't a yearly test, it's every three years.
Three years.
Yep, every three years. We're on reduced monitoring.
Okay, that's right, got reduced because there was...
No defects.
Money. Yeah.
One more thing. I'd like to give permission from the city council or the city manager to, I'd like to volunteer my services to do something with our entrance sign on the south side, south end of town. I'd like to have the letters painted black or something so that you can read it.
Yeah, every time I go by that thing, I think they should be black, but I think it's, Gene, I don't know who put that thing in there, Alan?
Al, Al from Pike Signs is who designed the sign. We can still look at putting in some illumination, some lighting. It might cost a little bit of money. I looked at Staton signs, I drive in there, none of theirs are lighted, they're more of decorative. I mean, they have the Marion County signs, green and white letters, reflective, talking about population and what city you're entering. The other ones are more decorative, and City of Statons isn't illuminated, but...
I think all we're talking about, that doesn't show up, that light orange, you know, you can't really see, you gotta get right up to the City of Sublimity. And I've agreed with Wayne, and I see the same thing, but, I don't know, the black, who put this thing in there, you say, or they...
Pike Sign from Salem.
Would they do that?
They did the same sign right outside the city hall door here.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I mean...
You can't, you can't read it.
I know that, Wayne, I appreciate that. What would you do?
I would, I have a granddaughter that is an artist, and I would like to have her paint just inside letters, all the...
Yeah.
Not anything else, just inside, so it will show up. I've driven by that thing at night, even with the illumination, you can't read it.
I agree with you, but I mean, how does the council...
Well, is it, you're not seeing it during the day or at night?
Both.
Really, it doesn't show up?
I got the same, same comments from my mother-in-law. She just noticed it when she drove into town this week. It's been there probably for years. My question is, does Pike Sign, do they have any suggestions?
I can talk to them about it, of course, yeah, I could certainly talk to them about it if that's what the council wishes.
I would have Alan talk to Pike Sign, but did anybody ever go look at those other LED...
The lights that you'd sent in, we'd looked at, it was operated off of a battery, the volume was DC.
Yeah.
And the light looked like it was a good light, it was just the charging, you know, the solar power.
Right.
Talking to, we talked to Pacific Coast Electric, and they said in this area, just the lighting with solar power just isn't very efficient. I mean, if you could hardwire it, put lights on it, then you'd be far better off.
But you go far around south on the street, and you see Staton sign, they're not illuminated, and they got black letters, and you can see it.
How would you just get a little Pike Sign? Talk to them. We could talk to Pike Signs and see what they recommend, or whatever.
Sure.
They might recommend painting it. What they did is round out a paint it. That's what they think's the best.
Right.
But is it steel?
It's, it's like anodized brushed aluminum.
Do you want to talk to somebody to make sure?
Right. I'll talk to Pike Signs to make sure what's...
Make sure they use the right kind of paints.
Yeah, I would definitely.
And thank you, Wayne, for offering.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
We have before us the minutes of March 13th meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
I haven't looked at them, and I didn't see anything. If you want to look, the other counselors could look at it.
I looked at it before I did.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the council minutes of the 13th of March 2017 meeting as presented. Second?
Then move the second that we accept the minutes of the March 13th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We want the staff reports. Deputy Tom Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, those in front of you, you might have last month's stats.
Or the month before, because I think it's two months in a row, right?
Two months in a row now. I have addressed that with my supervisor, and he has, is working on that situation with downtown and the statistician and his supervisor, so...
So with the information that we got from some friends of mine over on Hilltop, is there, is there another crime?
As far as we know so far, that is an isolated incident. However, what possibly could be related is a suspicious vehicle that was reported by a citizen down that direction on Main Street who caught a couple of guys saying that they were out of gas about 4:30 in the morning, same type of thing. You know, out of gas, wrong place, you know, this, they don't belong there, they pushed, they pushed their car there type things, what they said, but yet when he went back into his house, they drove away.
Not, not at all.
So, the citizen wasn't certain who he should call at the time, and said that, well, he didn't feel there was an emergency, but who do I call? So, this month, we're going to put out in the newsletter how to call the non-emergency line and how to call 911. So, on a case like that, he certainly could have called 911, let the dispatcher determine if that's an emergency or not, and transfer off of the, off the priority line, not onto a non-emergency line. But something like that needed to get reported, we need to get a deputy out, out there right away, because obviously, those guys were up to no good, casing houses, whatever the case is that they were doing.
Where is this at?
That particular incident was right down here on West Main Street. And that individual, well, it just wasn't certain, you know, what phone number to call, who to call, get a deputy out there. It didn't feel like it was an emergency to call 911, so, but like I say, in that particular case, if you don't know, certainly, you know, a case like that, call 911, let them transfer you off, you know. But whether if that was related to what happened over on Overlook on Friday night, early Saturday morning, I'm not certain. I don't have any leads on that. I'm gonna follow up and talk to that victim of that vehicle, where I think two gas cans were taken after the car was approaching it too. So, a little bit fishy, related anyway, so. But this last month's stats would have reflected that I've had the motorcycle deputy come in and work some traffic at the four-way intersection, you've probably seen him working. I had a couple of different concerned people come to me about people stopping or not stopping at four-way stop, or coming to a complete stop, so, he's a little bit more sneaky and where he can hide, watch that four-way stop, but I can't, I march cars, so, but that would certainly reflect. But I will get, once I do get those stats, afford those on to the city manager, David, and so you guys can have. But like I say, I don't, whatever's happening downtown with that statistician, I can't control. Unless, sorry to preze us further to add, you know, that's pretty much where we're at with the stats, so.
Sure. Yeah, nothing further to add, yeah, nothing further to add, but we are in order to correct that so it doesn't happen in the future, so, my call.
I had a thought, Tom, and it has to do with the crossing guards from the school. I think there's, I think we encompass probably four or five people, but if there's some way we can get them some sort of gift certificate, maybe we could do something at the city from Hans and Ellie's or somewhere, because I know this one up here, there've been times where I've been like, dang, she is putting her, putting her hands in somebody else's...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
...her way.
Putting her flag out there first, and then her, her right foot next, you know, so...
Yeah, because I've seen her run that flag.
Yeah.
But, just a thought.
And we look up to something like that. I know that I've, I've relieved one or two of them a couple of times in rainy, wet weather, and told them to go back inside, took their flag from them, but, yeah.
Well, thank you for being there.
So, yeah, we could certainly come up with something.
Well, something else, I didn't think of that in that crosswalk, just to get the attention. And I don't know whether it would be a grant to the city, or, well, it stuck, involved Marion County Public Works, getting the sword...
The flash.
Their solar-powered flashing lights again. So, that they can...
That, that would be something that, oh, yeah, he would have to go through the council since it's kind of...
Because they know the ones that they have up there by Schumacher, Ellen Lancaster, they seem, you know, some of these others, you know.
Definitely makes a difference.
Gets their attention, so...
Willamette?
Yeah, Willamette, yeah.
I think Willamette.
I mean, those are strolls.
The problem with the crossing guard person out there, there's different people every day.
Right.
Which is the only thing you knew that about.
Yeah.
Yeah, different person every day. And I wanted to mention today, but we did have a vendor in town on Sunday selling, and he came up to my door and rang my doorbell and said, are you interested in buying? And the first thing out of my mouth was, do you have a, do you have a license permit from the city? He goes, I don't need one of those. And I said, you do. So maybe it needs to be published in the State's Journal or something, you know.
I don't think those people are local.
No, I know they're not local, and I know he isn't, but that's...
That's the reason, come on Sunday.
Yeah, I says, do you have a permit? He says, no, I don't need one. Okay, you do. Something won't stop, yeah, I'm sure.
Okay. Okay, is that, okay, thank you.
Any more questions, if I can say, well, maybe that's...
Well, yeah, Steve, do you have anything for us?
Yep.
Okay. The city manager report for this, you're not being...
Two or three quick items, basically from Alan. Water main location on the alley property should be done this Wednesday. Plans for the Hassler subdivision, stage two, have been submitted. Final stages review and construction will start in late May or June. And then, possibly the biggest item in some ways is Marion Estates is going through major convulsions right now, has asked for, paid for a pre-application meeting this week, 10:30 I think Wednesday or Thursday. They're amending their PUD. By now, we're looking at one PUD amendment, several partitions, three subdivisions, a list of encroachments, and about 20 variances charged separately for one major variance, or as one major variance. And the resolution that I asked, we skip over until Lisa and Randy can talk, has to do with that, because we didn't have anything that says, here's what a, here, we didn't have our costs either mentioned in there explicitly, or more to the point, we didn't identify those monies we received as either deposits or fees. And unfortunately, a deposit is a liability, it's something you may have to pay back in total, even more or less, whereas a fee is revenue, and many of our deposits have been charged as revenue, which is incorrect. And so, that ordinance, which Randy needs to see, basically explains that, amplifies things a little bit, but it was kind of driven by the fact that Marion Estates just paid $350, because it wasn't, that action wasn't explicitly identified in Resolution 801. It just said, falls in the general category of all of the above, or none of the above, as the case may be. So, that's what that structure is, and there's going to be a lot of work on Marion Estates. I've heard everything from their refinancing to, they want to sell off some stuff, they want to do a lot of things. We should know a lot more at the next meeting, because that pre-application meeting is this week. And so, just to have a better record on that.
Is, is Randy and the planning commission in the loop on that?
Well, they will be, but not on this meeting, on this week. But no, they'll, they'll be intimately involved, and the, I've got from Lisa what will happen with that entire issue, and it will basically start off probably with a work session of a planning commission, then a planning commission meeting, then there'll be several other things that happen. But that's why I want to pull that back until Randy had time.
And then the, for the alleys, for the water main, that's squared away, that would be squared away, isn't there something with the storm, the storm, I mean, date?
I don't know anything about that, Alan, either.
Pardon me?
The storm grain, the...
The storms, the storm grain was TV, that TV report was reviewed by myself, Westec. Everything looks fine in that. Westec was gonna write a letter saying that the likelihood of any gases or anything being pretty much nonexistent in a storm drain, that he didn't have any concerns with it. We just need to get an easement for that one. We've got easements for the Stecker property and the church property for the water main relocation, but we haven't gone to the alleys for the storm line easement that goes underneath the garage.
Okay. Yeah, how are you gonna get an easement under a garage?
Well, yeah, they, they indicated they will give us one, so we'll describe it, but of course, anytime we have to repair anything, it's at our expense, so.
And there's way to do it.
They can't be repaired underneath the garage. They can do it personally, they can do...
Applying...
Yeah, never move it.
And not have to get underneath that garage?
They'll do it all from the outside. Or, or it might be more feasible at that time for Alan, to figure out a different way to get around it, you can move it sometimes else, but they can go with it either, that's the reason.
Randy, something?
I don't have...
Randy, did you have something?
Can I back up and ask a question? I'm pretty much out of the loop with Marion Estates, other than, I know there's something going on, but that whole facility was part of the PUD years ago, I'm guessing, 30 or more. And the purpose of a PUD is that you grant privileges that are outside of code because of specific circumstances at the time. I'm not exactly sure why, at this point in the game, variances would be considered. The city made all their concessions 37 years ago, so I'm not exactly... Generally, a PUD would involve a piece of property that has a topographical problem like a cliff or a wetland, and if that were in place, the people could put 50 houses, but because of that, and our lot sizes and streets, they can only put 30, so you protect that cliff or that wetland, and you allow 50 houses in the remaining piece of property. And it has to do with topography and stuff. In the case of Marion Estates, that, I believe, was part of it, because they hold stormwater for themselves and the city, and they worked around things, but they were allowed streets that were narrower, they were allowed lots that were narrower, and setbacks that were narrower, as all part of the PUD. And 20 or 30 years later, looking at a variance, I'm not quite sure how we arrived at that. Like I say, I'm out of the loop. I've heard there's something going on at Marion Estates, I've not seen anything, and rightly so, as a planning commissioner. I'm just curious as to how it got to this point for variance in something that was approved years and years ago. They got what they wanted, we got what we wanted, and now they're looking for something in addition to that.
Well, I guess, I'll just jump in here at this point, you know, this is all something that might end up coming here later, so I think it's really, enough said. David was just trying to give a little bit of update on what's, you know, these are the things working on, but we really shouldn't get into this.
Well, he, he opened the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying, so I'm just saying, okay, everybody, you know, let's probably just move on, because this could be something the council has to look at later, and we should just deal with it when it comes before the council at that point in time. So for now, okay, he's gonna have a meeting, and they're gonna bring in some information, and maybe they'll apply for something, or maybe they won't. Obviously, once they do, then the planning commissioner will deal with it, and perhaps the council.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Dave.
That's just financial reports. Are there any questions on the financial reports? I do want to emphasize cash. When I got there nine months ago, we had about $3.6 million in bank, we had about $4.1 million, and we earned a third of the year, $12,000 in interest, which is a good chance to earn, $36,000 or so, which is about 20 times what we earned in the prior year. So, cash is relatively strong. Now, I don't know if there are any other questions, I mean, are there any other reports that I provided?
Just going through the, Steve, you got one from the Oregon Department of Revenue, the penalty in interest, like, $586, is that a penalty we had to pay, or we got back?
I haven't looked at this one.
Oh, it's in the check register. I mean, I can, I'll, I'll just check with you later.
Would you, I mean, if you just...
Yeah.
Because it's specific, I wouldn't...
Yeah, right, okay, I will.
All right.
I'll worry about it.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions too, and I'll ask them.
Thanks.
Have you had any... I did, but I'll ask him, I'll call him tomorrow.
Okay. Were you at?
Yeah. Resolution 1617-5, based on our previous discussion in executive session, what I've given you is probably not current or relevant, and so I will just, I will talk to somebody about that, and you'll have to bring that back. However, if you don't agree, let me know, because we give a primary signatory on that, basically.
Well, shouldn't we have the other person on there now, though? If we did, these two that are here, you and Gene, wouldn't that make it primary signatures?
Yeah, yes, and so who should that person be then?
Okay, so I, I don't care what's due, you guys are...
Yeah, I'm okay with it, and then it makes me look to add an additional signature.
Yes. Well, if you do it, I mean, you, well, every time you do this, you need, but I can, I can still be, yeah, I can be on there, but I think if you want to, it'd be better to put all the names, because if you change it again, then we have to go through this whole process again, next one, changing, getting all the signatures, everything. It's just not adding one person, you have to change everything.
So you think we should wait on this?
No, I, if you...
I think we should do it.
Get these two on there.
Oh, okay. Okay, Resolution number 1617-5, a resolution of the City of Sublimity, City Council, authorizing signers on the city bank accounts. I'll just read it, because it's short. The City of Sublimity resolves as follows. Whereas it is now necessary to change authorized signers on the city bank accounts, the Columbia Bank, due to a change in staff and/or council. Now therefore, the result of the City of Sublimity is follows. If the following persons are authorized signers and their signatures appear above the respective authorized offices as follows. My name is Eric Mayer and Gene Ditter, City Council. Any problems?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution number 1617-5, until second.
Then move to the second that we pass Resolution number 1617-5. All in favor say aye. Aye. Do you have to read this a second time?
No.
Okay. Motion for Resolution 16.
Well, that one, that one was kind of postponed.
Yeah, we're postponed.
Then we have the water rates discussion, and we've had two work sessions. More or less, I think we go back and come back with a recommendation. My recommendation is this, you have it there. And I don't go through the history of where we are, or how we got here, unless you'd like me to. Appears that if we do this, we can be reasonably assured, and it's reasonably assured, because there's a number of variables, that we can be reasonably assured that we can cover our anticipated costs in fiscal year 18, that is, the year 130 to 2018. It was estimated to cost about $290,000, $300,000 in the water fund. If we raise the base rate to $15, and if we change the variable rate, the flow rates, and increase those by 30%, each of those actions would basically, it would take $10,000 to $15,000, because it's hard to be precise, but each of those would generate between $144,000 and $160,000, or about $300,000. If the, if the water fund in Dean generates $290,000 in cost, then you should just cover those costs. The expenses last year were $286,000, so it's not like these are included numbers. Given that both payroll and materials and supplies generally increase every year, $290,000 might be a little too conservative, but I'd use that number as saying we must cover at least that. By way of, again, reemphasizing things, although this assumes, anywhere between a $75,000 and a $90,000 transfer from the wastewater fund to the water fund, to zero out the negative ending fund balance that we will certainly have in the water fund this year. Right now, through March 31st, that negative number is about $51,000. If you just extrapolate, that becomes $66,000 to $67,000. For months, I've been saying it's 2075 to 90. It depends on what happens during these last three months. The other significant change, then, is the change in the number of tiers. We wanted to look at that, I looked at it, and I said, here's what will probably be the best that we can do. We now have five tiers, the fifth one being essentially unlimited, goes from $20,500 gallons a month to essentially unlimited. And my recommendation is that we essentially change it to seven, and you should see those tiers in front of you, they're substantially different. Our first tier right now is zero to 2,500 gallons, the new one would be zero to 5,000 gallons. Our next one is 2,500 to 5,500, and I won't go through all of these. And our new second tier would be 5,000 to 20,500. The following tiers, essentially, not exactly, will go up 20,000 per tier, so in other words, 40,000 to 60,000, 60,100 to 80,000, 80,100 to 100,000, and then above 100,000. If we start off rather than 77 cents, which has been around for several years, and start tier one with $1, then my best estimate is that we will generate about $150,000 from about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the tiered rates, and about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the, um, base rate. I looked at, um, your suggestion, Mayor, about ten dollars and seventy-five cents, I forget the exact number, but probably that will take another forty-five or fifty thousand dollars in increasing the tier rates. And what we more or less agreed to is that the tier rates, uh, I'm sorry, that the base rate should certainly be the foundation of all of this, simply because everybody has a tier rate that's equal to everybody else's. And so, it appears to me that fifteen dollars as the base rate is the fairest way to make sure that everybody is paying their share of the water fund that is, of course, financially not doing well at all. So, those are my recommendations, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
The only question I have, nineteen thousand five, and it jumps to twenty, then in the next twenty, and the next twenty. Okay.
Well, yeah, one's not exactly twenty, I think the third one's nineteen thousand five, and then twenty, 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 and then unlimited.
So, you're gonna still be paying a dollar fourteen, thirty thousand for the next twenty thousand until it gets a hundred thousand?
And then it's a dollar seventeen.
And then, then...
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't do anything that would be us penalizing in the higher rate. That's certainly a possibility, but I felt that was, and Gene and I had talked about that a little bit, that is certainly kind of arbitrary, but it certainly could be done. The, at about sixty thousand or so, um, you could, you could make probably a pretty good case that that probably ought to jump considerably. But again, when I was doing this, I was at least weighing the, the implication of having the people at the higher paying, eh, percentage-wise, more of a share than people at the lower. That may be perfectly valid, but in my studies, such as they were, and it was extensive, when I unders, it appeared that most people said that try to suit everybody equally. Now, you can make a good case that conservation, especially when you get to a hundred thousand gallons or more in August, that maybe it should go from a dollar seventeen to two and a half dollars. I mean, I don't have a good feel for that, and I'm sort of open to any suggestions you have.
So, let me just see if I can, uh, so if I, just so I know how much it's gonna affect the water bill. Like, if someone was, like myself, I use nine thousand gallons.
Mm-hmm.
So, I would be charged a fifteen dollars, right? And then I would get five dollars for the next five thousand, is that right? Is that how that works?
Your first five thousand would be a dollar per thousand.
Perfect.
And then, and then, and then the rest of it would all be a dollar?
Dollar three, so that'd be like four seventy-four. So, that would be fifteen, twenty, twenty-four seventy-four. And just so everybody knows how much it's gonna go up, with this rate, it would be, I was charged fourteen sixty-two in January, and with the new rate schedule, it would be twenty-four.
About ten bucks.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, it's all predicated upon August, which is the highest month.
Yeah.
If we've gone over this, seems like endless discussion, so, uh, is there any more pertinent things that you want to, before we ask for a vote on this?
Well, I was thinking that, that might be too much, that might be, the ten dollars might be too much.
We have to meet the...
I know, and we might have, I understand that. We might have to transfer some monies from the wastewater, that's what we're... I know, and we might have to do it again. I'm just saying that the base rate of fifteen dollars might be too steep.
That's, uh, what is it, now, seven?
Yeah, it's seven now.
Well, you're, we talked about raising it in increments, maybe three or four dollars this year, maybe four dollars next year. I think we're just putting off the envelope. I mean, I, we have to meet, that's according to Save On, we have to get enough money to cover this fund. And that's the way, David spent awful hours on this thing, and we have too. And I, I think most reasonable people would, uh, not bulk it, I mean, what is it, seven more dollars, eight more dollars a month. Fifteen looks big, but it's only eight, eight dollars in addition to what we're paying now.
And still under the lowest in the state.
I was gonna say, it's more than what I think in the state.
Yeah.
Quite a lot.
Yeah, I mean...
And also say, well...
David showed the chart, and we're clear down here in the end, and I mean, some of them are up here. I, the only thing that I, I mean, I'm willing to give this a chance to see what, what it does on the conservation, but...
Well, I don't know that this is gonna do anything for the conservation.
Well, I don't, I don't know. That's, that's the whole thing, because with our current water rates and everything like that, I mean, during the winter, we're fine. We're, our per capita use daily is way down, then when we start jumping up to two hundred to three hundred gallons a person per day during the summer months, June, July, August, maybe September, that's what throws everything off, and I, up to about a fifty, fifty thousand, sixty thousand gallon is what we have, but then we have some that are running way over a hundred thousand gallons a month during months, things get turned on.
And I agree with you, I don't think it's gonna do a lot for Congress, the conservation.
Right.
But this is a starting point, I think, that it doesn't this first year round, but somewhere to look at next year.
We can adjust it.
That's what I mean, this is a trial.
There would be a significant change in two years, when the debt service falls off. I mean, we're...
Well, we can go over it. We can, we can...
But it's that conservation, you gotta get that used down because of water rates, because it's, that's our losing battle.
So, are we gonna address that in court conservation?
We're not talking at this point. Not at this point.
Let's, let's, let's do it a year and see where we're at, Jim, and maybe, maybe it'll be justified a year.
We'll all see this summer what happens.
Yeah, I think we'll see some, happen this summer.
So, are we gonna read, we're gonna read this twice if we're going to?
Yeah.
Okay. Just this here, okay, that's, okay. City ord, City of Sublimity ordinance number seven thirty-four, an ordinance amending ordinance number three five three D, and providing for an increase in water rates. I'll read it again. The second reading is the City of Sublimity ordinance number seven three four, an ordinance amending ordinance number three five three D, and providing for an increase in water rates. So, you need to...
Motion, we accept this, this one.
I'll sign it.
Then moved in second that we, uh, adopted so it is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
You're gonna need that one reprinted gray with a few corrections there, and you still have to sign it later.
This, this one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be corrected as to my markings there.
Okay, I'll, I'll sign it. Ordinance seven three five, establishing bicycle footpath reserve fund in the City of Sublimity.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is a, one of those items that comes up when you start going through budgets and ordinances and ordering budget law, and the current things that are happening. This is just something that requires us to set aside, since a one percent of the funds received in the State Highway Fund every year, so that at some period in time, we can take the action that this indicates. And so, in order to do that in this year's budget, we just put this together so that we can start doing that with this year's budget. So, it's fairly simple, we don't have to read it twice, we can bring it back for a second reading, but I want to make sure that everybody saw this is something really, we don't have much choice, and we're just putting into our own ordinance what is required by ordinance statutes.
Okay.
It can be used. Materials and services and capital for footpaths and bicycle trails.
Well, this is one percent of what? One percent of what we receive, we get about fifteen thousand per month from...
State Highway.
State Highway funds.
Is this gas tax money, or State Highway?
That and more, yes.
So, it's pretty straightforward, that, well, first reading tonight, and then second reading a month from now. Okay. So, we'll read ordinance number seven thirty-five, an ordinance establishing bicycle footpath reserve fund in the City of Sublimity budget. That's the first reading, okay? So, we'll have to do the second reading next, um, next month, and we'll go on again. We're moving right along here. I, uh, I'm up next, I don't have any reports.
Are we gonna, maybe that good session have to, have to be... Yeah, we'll do it at the end, after, maybe after the reports, we'll do that.
Okay. We'll do that, could get the reports. Uh, Jim, do you have anything?
I don't, I brought it with, with town, we might want to do for the school.
The what?
With the school and the crossing.
Okay, okay. Gene?
Um, the only thing is, is there's been a little activity, um, request. Yes, um, I was sent an email where there's a group that, um, is offering their services, and it sounded good at the very beginning, where they would put a concert on, and, for this eclipse in August.
Okay.
And, uh, and then you got down to the very bottom, and it's not that they're gonna put it on for nothing, they want us to pay for it, and bring all these other vendors. And I, I read through it and looking at it, I just don't think that, you know, if it works, uh, I'm gonna, we have office staff send an email back, and say thank you, and I think they contacted me too, and I says, I don't know. Other than that, can you just move right along with other things?
So, we did. Think of, Jim?
No, I don't, I've got a couple of questions on the bills we've picked, and I'll, I'll deal with that.
Yeah, that's okay. Michael Taylor is, he's gone tonight, and he's, he's our other council member here. So, uh, we have one other item tonight to deal with, and, um, it's to, a motion to, Gene, would you wanna make a motion to accept the resignation for the last day?
Yeah, he actually... He's got it all.
Oh, Steve, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I, I wrote that too, but I'll read it for you.
Okay.
A motion to accept the resignation for David Marshall, City Administrator, the last day in the office is of April fourteenth. He will be paid through, uh, May tenth, benefit, benefits paid through May thirty-first. Is there any discussion? Do we discuss this?
Just the benefits through May thirty-first.
Right, so when, when you actually, so you're gonna make that motion, and so what you do, I guess you just clarify the, that the, uh...
That the benefits would be health?
When you say, when you say benefits, you, it's, it's the health insurance benefit payable, or, you know, be in place through May thirty-first.
I wanna make sure that it's the health insurance benefits that are paid through May thirty-first.
So, uh, Jim, why don't you go ahead and make that motion, if that's...
All right, I'd like, I'd like to make the motion to accept, uh, the resignation for David Marshall, City Administrator, last day in the office as April fourteen, be paid through May tenth, and health insurance benefits paid through May thirty-first.
What's that?
Then moved in second that we accept the resignation of our city administrator, David Marshall, and, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you can, motion carries. And I think that's, uh, that's drops it up. All right, anybody, anything else you wanna say? Okay. We're done?